City Council Regular Meeting on February 19, 2025. The time is 5:31 PM. This is a call to order. Can I get a roll call?
Counselor Woodruff. Mayor Buell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Yasi.
Here.
Counselor Yusef. And Counselor Bosmans.
Present.
Item 1.1, Reading of the Indigenous Land Acknowledgement.
This is a call to honor and respect Indigenous sovereignty and self-determination. As residents and visitors of Durango, we are called upon to educate ourselves about the history and cultural heritage of the land we inhabit. The city of Durango is situated on the ancestral homelands and territories of the N'uchu (Ute), Hicaria (Apache), Apache, Pueblos of New Mexico, Hopi-Sinam (Hopi), and Dene-Navajo nations. The original stewards of this land were forcibly removed and exposed to countless atrocities by the United States government, including repeatedly broken treaties, forced assimilation, the tragic legacy of Indian boarding schools, and the loss of ancestral homelands. We recognize lasting generational trauma exists within Native communities today. We affirm the continuing importance of ancestral sites to descendant communities as integral to the living cultural landscape. This acknowledgement only becomes meaningful when combined with accountable relationships and informed actions. May this serve as a step towards inclusion and reconciliation.
Thank you. Item two, the introduction of the translator. Is the translator on? It happens every time. Is there the translator online?
Liz, you've been unmuted. She should be rejoining.
Okay, we'll move on, and then when she's here, just wave me down and I'll switch back over. Opening remarks by mayor and council. I just wanted to let everyone listening know that Counselor Yusef did have an excused absence for today. Counselor Woodruff had an issue at work, and he could not leave, and so that is why he is not not here today. He wanted to send, say sorry. Opening, or let's see, presentations, proclamations, there's no items. Next up is city manager updates.
It is la actualización.
Oh, we're here. Never mind. I hear the translator.
Yes, sorry. It just, they don't move me into the room, and I was not able to open up my mic. I'm so sorry.
You're good. Go ahead.
My name is Liz Torres, and I am here with my colleague Nestor. We're here from the CLC, and we want to thank you for your commitment to language justice. What this means is that everyone has the right to speak and be heard in the language of their heart. So today, we're gonna do simultaneous interpretation, and we should be able to turn it on in a few minutes. You can go to the more menu and select languages and speech, and you can select English or Spanish from there. Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Liz Torres, y estoy aquí con mi colega Nestor. Estamos aquí de la CLC, y queremos agradecerle por su compromiso con la justicia lingüística. Y hoy, el día de hoy, vamos a interpretar simultáneamente, y podrá tener acceso al menú de interpretación por medio de los tres puntitos que dicen more o más, y allí puedes seleccionar el idioma de su corazón. And we can go ahead and get started.
Great, thank you. All right. City manager updates.
Yes, mayor and council, we do have a city manager update. I'm going to ask Devin Schmidt, our chief financial officer, to come up and present some news that we heard today.
Good evening, mayor, council, Devin Schmidt, chief financial officer. I wanted to provide an update that we received from the Government Finance Officers Association that Durango did receive our certificate for achievement for excellence in financial reporting. So this award is in alignment with our goal of organizational stewardship, to ensure a financially sustainable, innovation-led framework that thrives on building effective partnerships to alleviate city costs and harness the power of technology for efficiency. So what does this award mean for the city of Durango? This recognition highlights the finance and accounting team's dedication and commitment to excellence. It acknowledges the city's spirit of our full disclosure, transparency, and clear commitment to financial communication. This achievement enhances our public trust and showcases the professionalism of the teamwork within the finance department. And the award is the highest honor in governmental accounting and financial reporting, recognizing adherence to the Government Finance Officers Association's rigorous standards. I wanted to have a special appreciation or shout out for Diane Gersh, our compliance and reporting manager, for her leadership in guiding this annual process, and congratulations to all involved in this remarkable accomplishment. So congratulations to this amazing team. This is really a testament to the work that our financial team has accomplished for the 2023 Act for.
Yes.
Mayor and council, I just wanted to take an opportunity to give Devin a big thank you for all of the work that she's placed in. As you all know, this is her last council meeting with us. Devin is going on to St. Pete's Beach to be their chief financial officer, and I thought it was appropriate time to commend her for her service there she had here at the city of Durango. Some of you may know she got here late 2019, so she was here a few months before I got here, but was taking care of the finance department after the unfortunate embezzlement incident. And I think, as you see today, a bitter sweet time for us to see her leave, but seeing where she took over back in 2019 and helping the finance department go through to where we are now as an award-winning department, along with some recognition that we've received from not only the Department of Local Affairs, but universities now that are using our financial reporting. So in front of everyone here, Devin, thank you so much for your service to the city of Durango. We will miss you, but wish you the very best in your journey to St. Pete Beach. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Devin. All right, next up, we have committee board and liaison reports. Do you have anything, nothing for Counselor Bossmans? Yep.
All righty, so. On February fifth, we had a dinner with the Utes and city council downtown and we all enjoyed the evening, talking and talking about families and what we're about. So I thought that was making good progress for us. And then on February thirteenth, I had the regional housing authority meeting and we just, we're in the midst of doing a annual update and documents and we got updates from all the members, which is what? Inacio, Bayfield, La Plata County, and Durango. So that's all going pretty well at this point in the year. And then I went out to Inacio to participate in the opening of the Rock Creek Housing Project there that the city of Inacio has been working on to provide workforce housing. So they're making like ten units that are almost done. And so it was a real positive outcome for the community there because they're going to be having some new workforce housing. And that's about it.
Excellent, thank you. I had kind of a busy two weeks. We had our Alliance Board meeting where we were presented with the Childcare Strategic Plan that is published online. The leaders of that push are going to be going around to different entities. I think we're going to be getting as a council an update on that. It's an excellent report, broken down in chunks, but it's going to take us about twenty million dollars to solve our childcare crisis. So that's kind of a big chunk that we'll have to try to chip away at here and there. We had, like Gilda said, an amazing dinner with a Southern New Indian tribe and planning for another meeting in the near future over at the tribe. We had lots of great discussions about potentially getting youth, the mayor's youth committee. I thought this was important for Ben too, because I didn't mention it. But the mayor's youth advisory commission and then their youth advisory commission, maybe together on some regional efforts. I thought that could be really cool. I had a Q and A with Florida Mesa Student Council here where they were learning about city governance and Ben and Fay took them on a tour of city hall. And then they did the drawing for the lots on the placements of the ballot, which Kip and Chris were here with me for. So that was fun and exciting. And then, oh, I've had two Project Run leadership luncheons. So Project Run is an alliance program that's kind of developing our workforce in Durango and trying to give them the skills and leadership skills. And so I've been doing some one-on-one luncheons with them. I met with Andrew about the Colorado Voting Act that's going through legislation, legislation right now. I think it might be good to get like Fay or Ben kind of apprise on those things, just how it could affect us and if it's a positive for the city of Durango or not. We had the investor meeting. Jose and I went and met with the bid board and talked to them about some initiatives that the city has been looking at and maybe has in the future that they could potentially weigh in on, weigh in on, like, you know, next steps in the design there, as well as minimum wage and the city hall PD project and some other things. So that was nice to kind of get their feedback on different things that we've been doing. The Green Business Roundtable was last week as well. The Durango Botanic Gardens talk and about their efforts and the great initiatives that they have coming forward. And then Gilda and I attended the Fab Executive Meeting. So, you know, just a few meetings over the last couple of weeks. Let's move on to item seven, public comment on action items only.
Public comment is encouraged on agenda items set for consideration and a vote by the council tonight. Public comments on items not set for consideration by the council come later in the meeting. Please begin your comments by stating the agenda items set for a vote you intend to speak on, your full name, and if you are a resident of the city of Durango. Make your comments directly to the council. Do not expect a response from the council or staff. Comments are limited to three minutes per person unless modified by the council. Unused time is not transferable to other speakers. Comments must be specific to the item you identified when you began your comments. Profanity, hate speech, personally derogatory remarks, speech unrelated to the item you identified, or other speech that is disruptive to the meeting will be ruled out of order by the chair and any remaining time will be forfeited by the speaker. Exceeding the time limit infringes on the rights of others and is out of order. Only a majority vote of the council can modify time limits. Please note, U.S. sign up prior to the mayor calling the item on the agenda. Signing up after the item is called will result in your name not being called to speak.
Thank you. And there's one individual who signed up to speak under agenda items, and that is Alan Miller, who indicated that they are online and they're speaking about item eleven point two, which is the two resolutions to amend the city's two thousand and twenty-five operating and two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five capital budget. And this was for Alan Miller. Alan, can you unmute your microphone?
How about now? Can you hear me now?
Yes, we got you now.
Hey, thanks very much. My name is Alan Millar. I'm a resident of the city of Durango and I'm speaking today regarding the budget amendment for the College and Eighth Safety Project. I'd like to begin by thanking Mayor Buell and Transportation Director Sarah Hill for taking the time to walk through the streets of our neighborhood and listen to our concerns a few weeks ago. I sent an email to this effect as well, but I'll just follow up by saying I'm also the president of our local HOA and we are located a short distance away from East Eighth. We presented the project information to all of our membership and all the responses were in favor of the project, which would be a real boon to our neighborhood. In particular, several folks noted how much the project would improve the intersection of Third Street and Eighth Avenue, which is the primary access to the trails of Horse Gulch. There's a whole lot of people who cross that, cyclists and pedestrians every day. And it's kind, as we discussed on our neighborhood walkabout, it's kind of a dangerous place to cross and it'd be great to have this project make it safer. Putting Eighth Avenue and College on a road diet as well as other improvements would reduce crashes, improve access and safety for vulnerable road users, and improve connectivity to our trail system. We should be encouraging folks to access, access these trails without using their cars to make it easy and safer for them. By slowing traffic down, it would also decrease road noise and frankly, make it a lot easier for kids to get to Park Elementary without other folks driving them in their cars. Thanks for your time and attention and I'll sign off now. Or you guys can sign me off.
Thank you, Alan.
And that was the only individual who signed up to speak for this section of public comment.
Next up, we have item eight, our consent agenda. Can I get a reading of the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you. Item eight point one, approval of meeting minutes. We have approval of the minutes from the February fourth, two thousand and twenty-five city council regular meeting. Under eight point two, final reading of ordinances, we have final approval of ordinance oh, two thousand and twenty-five dash ten, amending in, amending in pertinent part, the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter Three, Alcoholic Beverages, Section thirteen dash nine, takeout and delivery permits. There are no adoption of resolutions by consent. There are no approval of other administrative items. And there are no items under eight point five, request for public hearing. Under eight point six, introduction of ordinances, we have eight point six point one, which is introduction of an ordinance authorizing the city of Durango to sublease the upstairs offices located at eight oh two Main Avenue to Lucky Services LLC, the Board of Trustees for Fort Lewis College, and the Durango Business Improvement District. Under eight point six point two, we have introduction of an ordinance establishing the Durango Prosperity Office, appointing a prosperity officer, and creating divisions of economic opportunity, innovative housing solutions, and destination, marketing, and management, all pursuant to the Durango Charter, Article Two, Section eleven, Paragraph A. Under eight point six point three, we have introduction of an ordinance to establish a tourism commission through the creation of the prosperity office. Eight point six point four is introduction of an ordinance amending in pertinent part, the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Two, City Council, by amending Section two dash nineteen, Rules of Procedure, Part B, Section seven. Under eight point six point five, we have introduction of an ordinance amending in pertinent part, the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter sixteen, Noise, Section sixteen dash nine, exterior loudspeakers. And there are no items under eight point seven, which is request for excused absences.
Excellent, thank you, Ben. I'm going to pull eight point six point one and eight point six point four. Does any other counselors have any items to pull?
No, second.
Okay, prove them with the taken out. Okay, excellent. Wait, I need a motion to approve them.
I approve the items that Jessica just listed.
And I'll second. Can I have a roll call?
Counselor Bossmans.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Yasi.
Yes.
And Mayor Buell.
Yes. All right, items pulled from the consent agenda. I'll start with eight point six point one. I'm going to have to recuse myself from this. As we know, it's a conflict of interest. I own Lucky Services. I've disclosed this numerous times. Because I'm recusing myself, there won't be a quorum for this vote. And so I'm going to ask for counselors to make a motion to move it to the next city council meeting.
I make a motion to move eight point six point one to the next meeting.
I'll second. Can I second if I pull yes?
Once you lose the quorum, it automatically rolls over.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
You can vote.
Great. Can I get a vote?
Mayor Pro Tem Yasi.
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans.
Yes.
Mayor Buell.
Yes. In terms of eight point six point four, introduction of ordinance amending the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Two, City Council, by amending Section two dash nineteen, Rules of Procedure, Part B, Section seven. This was submitted by Counselor Yusef. As she's not here, I'm going to suggest that I get a motion to move it to the next meeting.
I make a motion that we move eight point six point four to the next meeting.
I'll second. Council discussion? All right, can I get a roll call?
Mayor Pro Tem Yasi.
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans.
Yes.
And Mayor Buell.
Yes. All right, moving on. Item ten, public hearings. Ten point one is a public hearing regarding an ordinance for the city of Durango and La Plata County Joint Annexation Petition of County Roads two fifty and two fifty-one, submitted by Daniel Murray, Community Development. Daniel.
Good evening, Mayor Buell and council. Here this evening to present a public hearing and first consideration, but two parts. We'll just do public hearing now and then first consideration is later on your agenda. This is regarding the joint annexation petitions from city of Durango, as well as La Plata County for county roads two fifty, two fifty-one as road right-of-way. Quick context map, so you see the left side of your screen was where the annexation would begin at Holly, that's currently city limits, up to the intersection of two fifty, two fifty-one and Mets Lane. The area in blue is the portion of the road proposed for annexation. The area on the north side of the road is largely county and the area on the southern part of the road is largely city limits. Zooming in a little closer, and these are two pages from exhibits in the actual annexation. You see the area in blue is proposed for annexation. The areas in yellow are important. Those are portions that are contiguous to city limits currently. So a little less contiguity in this first half, but almost entirely, yes, yes, entirely contiguous in the second half of the road segment. And this shows the portion that will be improved as well at the intersection of two fifty, two fifty-one. This is a good snapshot of existing conditions. We see the lack of shoulders, the lack of any sidewalk or bike lane, as well as any stormwater improvements. It's currently being handled by ditches on both sides of the road and a very aging road surface that's in need, in need of improvement. So what's proposed is both shown here in plan view or cross section. And we see two eleven-foot travel lanes with a median at times, as well as concrete bike lanes, five to six feet on both sides, a landscape buffer, and then a concrete sidewalk in ten feet in width, known as a multi-use path. We can easily visualize this because the road is half under construction. So here we see phase one over to phase two. And that's the median travel lanes and bike lanes and all the concrete staged to the left, that's what is involved in stormwater. That all goes underneath the road in the curb and gutter to handle runoff. Next slide again showing phase one and its current improvement. What's important here is to highlight the multi-use path on the left side that's graded and will be paved as part of phase two. And the bike lanes are a little more advanced design where, rather than having pavement transitioned to concrete and cyclists are choosing between those two surfaces, it's a full continuous concrete drain pan, similar to Florida Road, and it makes it much more conducive for a cyclist to use. And I've referenced a good case study here. This is Florida Road. It almost draws entirely from the same scenario. You have your multi-used path, landscape strip, the concrete drain pan, which functions as a bike lane, travel lane, median, and another travel lane. So we know what we're getting and it ties our design throughout the city. So picking up with annexation, the background, this is a joint partnership between city and county. The parties recognized the primary benefits of annexation would be the public improvements, such as road servicing, sidewalk, crosswalks, bike lane, and drainage improvements. But also roads, when improved, create economic opportunities. And this is an arterial road for the city. It's a very important connectivity on this portion of town. And with infrastructure comes the opportunity for increased housing stock, employment, and businesses generate sales tax, which benefit both city and county. The parties came together in two thousand and twenty-four to enter into an intergovernmental agreement, an I G A. The parties committed to the annexation process as well as funding. And really, it was that funding and I G A that enabled the road improvements to kick off last year. I mentioned both its city and county. As you would expect, city is a partner here since we've acquired road portions of land where the county right-of-way was not the full width. So that's why you have two petitions coming together and a joint annexation petition. The total acreage of the road is a little over seven acres. Process-wise, this began many years ago, eleven years now, where the parties identified the need for road improvements and had an initial road design. That design was updated in two thousand and nineteen. In two thousand and twenty-one, community engagement kicked off and there was a final road design in two thousand and twenty-four. In two thousand and twenty-one through twenty-four is when the city, as I mentioned, went through the process of acquiring about a dozen slivers of land to complete the road wide, right-of-way that's needed per our standards. And then the intergovernmental agreement for annexation allowed road construction to begin last year. Bringing things up to date, the Community Development Commission made a recommendation to council. It was unanimous, six zero in August of twenty, August twenty-sixth of twenty-four. And then the joint annexation petitions were submitted by the Board of County Commissioners, as well as the city of Durango, which allows us to be here today. We've gone through two of the three steps. On January seventh, we accepted the petitions, or I should say council accepted the petitions. You set a public hearing date of today. And the second piece of tonight would be an introduction of the ordinance. Provided council takes action tonight, the third and final step would be the final consideration. the final consideration which could happen as soon as March 4th. Road construction will resume this summer during typical construction season and it will be completed this summer as well. Looking at the review criteria, there are four. First being that yellow line I mentioned. There has to be a minimum of one-sixth or 16% contiguity with city limits. In this case, we have 36% contiguity. There has to be at least 50% landowner consent. And in this case, city and county allows us to achieve 100% of landowner consent. And is the annexation of community interest? This draws from statute where oftentimes annexation is land, not roads. So is the area of benefit to the city of Durango in terms of its community? And it is most certainly being capable of being integrated into city limits as it is a key part of our road infrastructure and it's adjacent to the city. And lastly, are we going beyond more than three miles from city limits? And that is not the case. We are right adjacent to the city. There are actually three strategic plan goals being met with this annexation. Organizational stewardship as well as innovation, innovative housing and economic opportunity with respect to what development could come. And lastly, the road itself is an example of reliable infrastructure and community connectivity. Looking at our comprehensive plan, it identifies this road as a priority road network for improvements. So this annexation is what enables those improvements. It's also called out on the 2030 Regional Plan, which is a partnership with CDOT. And then lastly, I've mentioned how this type of infrastructure can lead to economic opportunity and housing development. Staff finds that the proposal does meet the criteria of both statute and Land Use Development Code. We did not receive any formal comments. I received one phone call and there are questions regarding addressing. The properties on 251 and 250 will need to be readdressed once this is annexed into the city. We'll come back to council with a separate resolution setting those names and we'll have an address map. GIS is still working through that process and we think that can coincide with completion of construction. So that's not necessarily a contingent upon tonight. So this is, step one would be our recommendation to open a public hearing and then we can come back at your desire for the first consideration later tonight.
Excellent, thank you. I'll move to open a public hearing for the proposed city of Durango and La Plata County Joint Annexation Petition of County Roads 250 and 251.
Second.
Council discussion? Can I get a vote?
Mayor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Yasi?
Yes.
And Councillor Bosmans?
Yes.
All right, the public hearing is open. Do we have any public comments for this item?
No one had signed up for this item.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, item 10.1 has been continued to March 4th. Next up we have item 11, resolutions. 11.1 is a resolution to adopt an updated purchasing policy submitted by Finance. Evan?
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Devin Schmidt, Chief Financial Officer. I'd like to start by thanking our purchasing manager, Bob Grogan, and our purchasing administrator, Allison Everett, as well as Zita Fail for their work on this purchasing policy. The policy's role is to ensure fair and ethical, efficient procurement processes. This policy protects public funds, promotes accountability, and aligns with the city's financial sustainability goals. So first off, the alignment with organizational stewardship objective specifically to ensure a financially sustainable innovation-led framework that thrives on building effective partnerships to alleviate city costs and harness the power of technology for efficiency. So just a little background, what